All right. Welcome, everyone this afternoon. Good afternoon. I'd like to welcome you to Legislative Session Legislative Day Five. March—this is the work session for Legislative Day, March 3rd. I'm very confused. Sorry. All right. So we'll start off with—we have a reappointment to the Baltimore County Planning Board, Mr. Steven Heinel. I think Mr. Heinel is with us today. Mr. Heinel, did you want to come up and say a few words? Good having you here with us.
Thank you for having me. Mr. Chair, members of the County Council, thank you for having me today. It's an honor to be nominated, to be reappointed to the Baltimore County Planning Board. I was originally appointed in 2019 by County Executive Olshewski, and now that the new process is underway with recent passings of new laws, I have had to come up for a reappointment and approval by the County Council, and I thank New County Executive Kathy Klosmeyer for nominating me. If you have any questions for me about the Planning Board or anything like that, I'm happy to address it, but otherwise, I won't go any further with that.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Mr. Heinel? Councilman Patoka.
No, not a question. Just—it's good to see you here, Steve, and I just want to say that Mr. Heinel is very active in the Second District and has been active for a long time, so he's got a great track record of working to strengthen communities. So appreciate your—you're being a member of the Planning Board and wanting to stay on to continue the job. So I urge my colleagues to support Mr. Heinel's candidacy on this.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Jones?
Yes, again, Steve, it's good seeing you and thank you for your service. We've known each other for quite some time. I've always known you to be a very hard-working, diligent, honest person, and you've shown us that you can do a good job, and I'm sure you will continue to do a good job. So you have my support.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Marks?
And Mr. Heinel was an outstanding staffer for many years here, and good to see you and best wishes on your next term.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Grandle?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Steve, always good to see you. Thank you for your willingness to serve Baltimore County and continue to serve Baltimore County. I know that you have complete understanding of what the Planning Board is, what the mission is, and understand the importance of the Planning Board's partnership with the Council and with the administration on land use decisions. So I know you have a firm understanding on that, so I look forward to voting for you on Monday.
Thank you, Councilman.
Great. Well, thank you, Mr. Heinel. We'll—we'll look forward to seeing you Monday and voting for you.
Thank you. Appreciate your confidence. Thank you so much.
Absolutely. Next item up is Resolution 1225. This is from Council Members Jones and Patoka, adoption of the Ricehurst Town Streetscape Action Plan and Design Recommendations. Did either one of you want to cover it?
Yes, I—
You turn your mic off.
Okay. Thank you. I'll see, I'll direct of planning. Did you want to say anything about the Ricehurst Town? No? Okay. Okay, thank you. No, this is an opportunity where members of the community who have lived in Ricehurst Town, who care about Main Street, came up with some design guidelines and some requirements, all in an effort to protect Main Street and to make it better. So we appreciate all the citizens who stepped up, participated in the process. I know that there was some additional things that had to happen to satisfy the Planning Department, but as I understand, all those things have been taken care of and solved. So now we're moving forward.
Great. Thank you, Councilman Jones. Councilman Patoka?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So just want to state, Ricehurst Town is just an outstanding community. They're not shy about taking matters into their own hands, and when I say taking matters into their own hands, it's for—an example that just came up in our—kind of the daily work that we do as a council member. It's interesting, John Lee, we have a lot of people—you've—you've attended the Council Redistricting Commission meetings, and lots of people are conveying their views on wanting to kind of shape the—the lines, and some folks that are—have provided some testimony are actually interested in being a council member themselves. But it's interesting because the day-in and day-out work are pretty trivial calls that we get, trivial to us but not so trivial to the community. So, for example, we got a call—what's today—is yesterday—about trash on a—on a state—I think it was Ricehurst Town Road and Old Court and Slade. In Ricehurst Town, it's interesting, they take matters into their own hands, so they don't—they don't need to contact their councilmen that there's trash on a state road because they know every first of the month that they're all going to gather at—in front of Reader's Crab House, and they're going to pick that trash up themselves. And they do it every month. They've done it for the last—I don't know—I've been doing this since 2018, and so I just think that they're a community that—I feel like whenever they come to the county, we should address their need immediately because they address their own needs. They're all doing it for themselves. So a lot of times, the reason I'm bringing this up to you, John Lee, about the Redistricting Commission is because much of the activities of council are—the hundreds of calls we get a day are potholes, trash being picked up. You know, I got my first—I remember my first constituent complaint. When I walked through the door in December of 2018, we had someone—and this person actually ran for office, an interesting call—said, "Izzy, I need you to help me." I said, "What—I'm happy to help you. What can I do?" And he said, "My neighbor—my neighbor leaves his trash can out after the trash collectors have gone, and sometimes it's a day later that he doesn't pick up his trash can. Can you talk to him? Can you talk to my neighbor and tell him to bring his trash can up more promptly after—" And I said—I thought like, "Yeah, I could, but why don't you just talk to him?" You know, empower yourself. And how does that relate to Ricehurst Town? They're always empowering themselves, and that's why they're outstanding community. And Councilman Jones, I support anything Ricehurst Town does. I probably talked too long. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. All right. Anybody else for Ricehurst Town Streetscape? Okay. All right. So we will move on to Resolution 1325. Council Members Marks, Patoka, and Urtell, review of the Greater Middle River Design Guidelines. Yes, Councilman Marks?
Thank you very much. Resolution 1325 requests that the Department of Planning reviews the Greater Middle River Design Guidelines that were developed by the Essex Middle River Civic Council. That is an outstanding organization in the Middle River area that works very hard, and they have come up with a draft of these guidelines that we would like to have reviewed by the professional planning staff. I'd like to thank Mr. Lafferty, his staff. I'd like to thank the leadership of the Civic Council, and also I look forward to the review by the planning agencies of these recommendations.
Great. Thank you, Councilman Marks. Councilman Grandle?
Mr. Secretary, could you add me as a sponsor to Resolution 1325, please?
Certainly, Mr. Grandle.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Good—to have you onboard, Councilman Grandle.
You knew I was coming anyway. Glad you decided, Councilman.
All right. Any other comments about Resolution 1325? Seeing none? All right, we'll move on to—
Mr. Chair, we have one speaker for this item.
Oh, good.
It's our only speaker today.
Okay. Mr. Josh Sines?
That is correct.
Unbelievable.
Can you hear me?
Mr. Sines, we can hear you.
Yes, we can. Great. Good afternoon, councilmembers. My name is Josh Sines, and I'm the president of the Essex Middle River Civic Council. I appreciate the opportunity to speak today in support of the Middle River Design Guidelines. These guidelines, which the Civic Council has created, reflect the vision and priorities of our community, ensuring responsible, high-quality development that enhances our neighborhoods while preserving the unique character of Middle River. They provide a clear framework for growth that balances economic opportunity with community integrity, improving aesthetics, walkability, and overall quality of life. Middle River is a community with a strong history and a promising future. Thoughtful planning now will ensure that new development respects our residents, our environment, and our shared goals for a vibrant and sustainable future. These guidelines represent a collaborative effort among community members and stakeholders, and I urge the council to support their adoption. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Sines. Councilman Marks, did you have—
Thank you, Mr. Sines, for your leadership and for always having such positive things to say before the council.
Thank you. I appreciate y'all's time.
Thank you, sir. All right. Anything else on Resolution 1425—or 1325? So now we're on to 1425. Councilman Marks, authorization of DPWT designation of areas for golf cart use.
As you may recall, on December 17th last year, the council passed Bill 10424, which established a process in which the county could authorize the use of golf carts on certain limited local public roads in Baltimore County. This resolution designates three communities where that would be allowed. The Department of Public Works and Transportation was involved in reviewing these routes so that we could make sure they were safe for this type of transportation. We received letters of support from all three of these community associations, and so the intent of the resolution is to allow for the golf carts to be placed in these specific routes.
Councilman Jones, did you—
Yes, I guess—you know, Councilman Marks, I was—the other day I was—when I first saw the legislation, I thought, you know, certain communities would have golf carts, and I understand it, you know, maybe around the Marine or something. But the other day, I was sitting there, traffic light, at Rolling Road, and there was a golf cart. And I saw the guy pull into the fast food restaurant, get out, and I guess he was going to get some lunch, and I got a little closer and I noticed he was coming from one of the apartment complexes. So I guess the use of golf carts are more prevalent than—at least, I thought.
So thank you for that—that anecdote, Mr. Councilman Jones, but—so just keep in mind, this is a pilot program, right? So if this—if we hear that this is not working, we can pull this back.
Does this give specific roads for where it's allowed? Is that what—is that what this piece of it does?
Yes.
Okay.
And Public Works was involved in reviewing those roads.
Right, okay. All right, great. All right. Any other questions for—on 1425? None? Okay. Next up, we have Director Lauren Buckler on two items. Ms. Buckler, how are you? So we had—had one on construction inspection services, and then you have another for specialized transportation service.
That is correct. So I'll start with the construction inspection services. It's a fiscal matter. We are requesting approval of amendments for three contracts, one with BOTA consulting engineers, one with development facilitators, and one with soil and land use technology to continue to provide construction inspection services. We wouldn't use these amendments until council approval. They're necessarily due to the increase in the number of projects requiring these services. The proposed amendments remove the existing combined cap of $16,451,000 and limit the compensation to the amount approved for each of these services. The estimated compensation total is $30 million for the five-year, four-month term, including the renewal pyramid—periods. Happy to take any questions that you have.
Councilman Grandle?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I have no questions. Just a thank you, Ms. Buckler, to Mr. Shiflett, Mr. Russell, and probably Shop 9. Called them on a difficult cleanup issue, and they got on it, and I don't know the resources that they had to muster to take care of this particular issue, but got a call from Mr. Shiflett today, and he told me that the area is cleaned up and the—the mess is gone. So very—very thorough job by—by your folks. Just wanted to pass along, thank you.
Thank you, sir. I'll make sure they get that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Grandle. Councilman Marks?
I would also like to thank your help—thank you for your help with the recent sinkholes in the White Marsh area of my district, as well as the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Did you want to cover the—
Yes. Second item.
Specialized transportation service?
Yes. So this one's the second time you're hearing this one. This is a increase to the grant funding that we receive, federal funds that pass through the state. So we're seeking approval for $4,861 for special transportation service gifts and grants funds programs. This supports salaries of our full-time and part-time county ride bus drivers. So we do have a match. We already have that match taken care of. It's just an additional $4,800 towards that program. Any questions on that item?
No. Any questions for Ms. Buckler? Ms. Buckler, sorry. Guess none. Thank you so much. Have a great afternoon.
You, too.
Good seeing you. Next up, we have Mr. Lawrence Richardson from Department of Health and Human Services on some grant programs. Mr. Richardson, how are you tonight, this afternoon?
Good afternoon, Chairman Urtell, members of the council. The administration is seeking your approval of supplemental appropriation and the amount of $386,000 for the ENOUGH Capacity Building Grant. ENOUGH is the Governor's Office for Children's Grant Program to help eradicate childhood poverty. ENOUGH is engaging neighborhoods, organizations, unions, governments, households for the eradication of childhood poverty. The $386,000 Capacity Building Grant will be used for technical assistance to provide to our community quarterback, the Community Assistance Network. We'll be working closely with Community Assistance Network on building capacity within—creating place-based initiatives around childhood poverty or eradicating childhood poverty in the Essex and Middle River area, based on the census codes that were provided to us by the Governor's Office for Children. And I'd be happy to take any questions.
Any questions on— Councilman Patoka?
Not a question, just a comment, Mr. Richardson. So as you were briefing us on this issue, I had lots of questions in my mind, and you addressed each of them, so I just want to thank you for a strong report.
Okay.
Because like I had one, two, three, four questions, and your remarks—as you continued on your remarks, you addressed each one of those four questions. Thank you.
Thank you. There was—you're—we have you here for item seven and then 13. Was that all the grant? Do you have more grants differently?
I have—I have a contract. I have a fiscal matter also, but that's the only—
Why don't you cover that while you're here?
So the administration is seeking your approval of a contract with four companies to provide evaluation and assessment of multiple grant awards. The companies are Pacific Institute Research and Evaluation, Advocates for Human Potential, Health Management Associates, and 11th House Solutions. The work done by the awarded contractors will provide data collection from the various programs, as well as analysis of the robust evaluation plan in order to fulfill the grant requirements as required by the Mayor of the Department of Health. The contract term is upon council approval for one year with four one-year automatic renewals, and the estimated total compensation for the five-year, four-month total contract is $4 million. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Anybody have questions for Mr. Richardson?
Mr. Richard—it's—is this required of the county to do this?
Yes.
Is that why we do it?
Correct. And the funding is—comes through the actual grants that we receive. So it's currently to evaluate about five grants that total about one—$4.1 million. So that's part of the analysis due to MDH for the grants that we receive.
Okay. And the—the $4 million total, is that what the evaluations cost us?
That's the estimated total based on the amounts per each grant that will be reviewed. So there's an administrative cost built into each grant, so we're estimating roughly $4 million over the five-year period.
Okay. And do you evaluate them every year, or is it just at the end?
It's—it's different based on each individual grant, so there's different evaluation periods for each grant.
And how many grants?
Right now, there's five. There's potentially five more that could be added on to the same contract with the same amount.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Councilman Grandle?
Mr. Chair, sure. I just wanted to take an opportunity, going back to Mr. Richardson's first item before us, just something sort of thematic that happened in the Seventh District in the—in the past week. Last week, I was able to deliver a council resolution to an organization called Our Kids Read, and it is a—excuse me—it's a—it's a bookstore in East Point Mall, and all the books are free to kids, and they're all new books. So publishers like—I think Penguin and some of the other large publishers have donated books. I think the Baltimore County—I'm sorry, the Baltimore Community Foundation played a role in the funding. I believe that MCB Real Estate, who owns the mall, is playing a role as well. So it sort of fits in with the—the theme of your first item, Lawrence, you know, that giving kids an opportunity that might not otherwise be able to get a book in their hands and actually own it. I love our library system, but to actually just own the book and have that—for me growing up, that was a—I just felt like building my little library was a—was an important thing, and I got to be proud of it over—the years of accumulating books. Unfortunately, some don't believe I ever got past the third-grade reading level, but the books certainly—certainly helped out. So I just thought I'd—I'd mention that, that the store is open and free books for —for kids in the Dundalk and Essex area.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Councilman Grandle. Thank you, Mr. Richardson. I think we're—unless there's any other questions or comments. All right. I missed—I want to move around a little bit here. We missed Bill 1625. This is Councilman Marks, zoning regulations, uses permitted in RC-5 zone, Christmas tree farms, and plumbing mechanical and utility companies.
Thank you very much, and I apologize to everyone. I'm going to need to leave early. Today is the 95th anniversary of the Lock—a Long Green Volunteer Fire Company, the county executives going. I'd like to try to get to that, so I thank you for having me go here. Bill 1625 permits by right certain combinations of Christmas tree farms and plumbing mechanical utility companies in certain areas of the Resource Conservation RC-5 Zone. It also permits certain additional related uses if the area is screening and lighted. And again, what we're really trying to do here is accommodate the uses on this property, but also make sure that it is in compliance with landscaping requirements that meet or exceed the county code.
Any questions? No? Councilman Jones, no? All right. Thank you, Councilman Marks. Now we're going to move on to—back to miscellaneous business. We have Deputy Director Sally Nash is—from PAI is going to address us about the landscape manual and the local open space manual. Hello, Ms. Nash. How are you today?
Good.
Good.
Ms. Nash, AICP.
AICP?
Yeah.
We have to use her.
Yeah. Yeah. Member of the club. Good afternoon, Sally Nash, Deputy Director, permits, approvals, and inspections. I'm here today to discuss the update of two manuals, the landscape manual and the open space manual. Both of these were updated with the same process at the same time, but they are two different resolutions, so some of the information I'm going to tell you applies to both. To start with, these—these manuals were last updated 25 years ago, so we thought it was time. What our process involved was first having an internal work group where we pulled in staff members from the Departments of Planning, Rec and Parks, Environmental, as well as PAI, to look at these manuals and see what, if anything, needed to be updated, how we were going to do that, and how we were going to make the changes. We then went out to an external work group where we drew in landscape architects from several different companies that the county uses quite often when we have development plans, including CMR, Kimley Horn, MRA, Human and Roadie, and Bowler. We worked with them from July to November, meeting every other week to go through the manuals, talk about what things didn't make sense, what things have now been out—are now out of date because of code changes and other changes along those lines. And we then presented the updated manuals to the Planning Commission—to the Planning Board in October. So focusing now just on the landscape manual, some of the changes we made included updating code numbers with current code, making sections more concise and clear. We clarified the relationship with the comprehensive manual development, the CMDP, made sure that there wasn't any redundancies or conflicts with the CMDP. We basically kept the foundational concepts of the manual, which are planting units and screening types, the same. But we did add new uses that didn't exist 25 years ago, such as solar facilities. We also added data centers and energy storage devices. We clarified a lot of language. We added lighting standards. We updated all the graphics. There is now some example graphics in the appendices that show much more clearly how you prepare a landscape plan. So this is for the professionals out there, the landscape architects, preparing plans. There's a lot of guidance for them that wasn't in the previous manual. We also added new details that were more up to date and removed the checklist, which we are just going to put online. So for the open space manual, again, same process, same groups, but for this one, the one change we made was we changed the nomenclature from local open space to residential open space. This is because the term local open space applies to other pots of funding and other programs, and it can be confusing when we're just trying to focus on the required open space that is part of every development plan that's—including residential component has to include open space. So we wanted to clarify that this is what a landscape architect would use to prepare an open space document for the county. We also refined some of the definitions, deleted some that weren't used in the manual, clarified some standards, and changed some of the terminology to clarify. So for example, instead of waiver, we're saying fee and lieu, and updated the sample forms again to provide better guidance for the professionals who are preparing these plans. Are there any questions?
Councilman Patoka?
Thank you, Ms. Nash. I was just telling the chair, it's Ms. Nash, AICP.
That's right.
Ms. Nash helped me study for the AICP 20 years ago. Ms. Nash, do stormwater retention ponds fit into these manuals?
Not really. We do have a section on them, but they are largely separated in terms of the regulations from the landscape manual. We do have some screening requirements if a developer is putting in a large stormwater management pond, but as far as the facilities themselves, that's regulated by— management pond, but as far as the facilities themselves, that's regulated by the Environmental Department.
Got you. So facility needs to figure out how to address the flow of water.
Correct.
So I do want to address kind of the buffering around the management pond, because, you know, if you drive around Baltimore County, you'll see a whole variety of different types of stormwater management pond. Some look really good and some not so much. And at the end of the day, when even the good-looking stormwater management ponds are in place, they end up having this like three-foot, really ugly chain-link fence around them. And is there any way to address, because I see this in Baltimore County. I can't remember like being in Howard County in a new development and seeing like an ugly stormwater retention pond. And is there any way that we can kind of have these manuals talk to one another so that when we have this nice development or this nice new thing we have, and then have a, kind of a decent-looking buffer around the stormwater facilities? Is there any way to connect those dots?
We did meet with environmental department representatives to discuss what, what coordination there could be between the, the two regulations, sets of regulations. And I would say that theoretically, the stormwater ponds are supposed to be screened, screened better than maybe they are on the ground. But we did clarify the graphic for that condition, and I think it is a lot more clear what is required. As far as the fence, I know that there are some security concerns, and that often trumps some of the more aesthetic concerns.
Is Director, I think Director Lafferty may have left, but I think it's like even if we could address, and this is probably in their wheelhouse, just the chain-link fence, if we could like do some minor upgrade from just a three-foot chain-link fence that has no kind of, no structure on the top of it so that animals can knock it over, or it just looks, it just looks, I mean, I know beauty is in the eye of the beholder, but when I am the beholden, I think they look ugly.
Understood.
So, I don't know, that's just me, but I do think that maybe if we had a professional lens and maybe, I know our CAO likes to do benchmarking, maybe we could benchmark what some of the other counties are doing to make it look a little bit more attractive and to make us, you know, when people say, wow, you know, Baltimore County, their stormwater manager ponds look really great.
Sure, Madam CAO wants to get right on that one.
So anyhow, the planning staff perhaps could take a look at that.
Look at that.
But I do think that we have a lot of manuals and that they, they should kind of talk to one another so that, and I don't mean this as a criticism, this is just sometimes.
No, it, it's a good point. We discovered a few places where, over the past 25 years, these manuals had diverged from manuals in other departments.
Thank you, Ms. Nash.
Thank you, Ms. Nash. Any other questions for Ms. Nash? All right. Thank you so much. Have a great afternoon.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have, it's, it's Amanda Wensel. I don't, I think she presented last, last meeting, and this is a second hearing, so I don't, Chief Ebert, would that probably be correct? Okay. So you're up next. Same thing? Oh, did, did anybody need to talk about Pennsylvania task force reimbursements? Anybody have questions? I won't even make you come up for.
Thanks.
All right. Thank you, sir. Okay. So we'll move on to 12, which is Director Pesterfield, and I, I think you were here as well, or is that correct? Last time, did you, do you have any more to say about the grant?
Can't get too much of Mr. Pesterfield.
Did anybody have anything for Mr. Pesterfield? Director Pesterfield? Did I talk about the, the thing the other, I, I wanted to say publicly, and I don't, I don't know if I said this the last meeting, but we had an incident a couple of weeks ago where someone from the detention center had some medical issues, and a mother, a concerned mother called about her son who was in the jail, and, you know, we don't often get those calls, but I called Doc, Director Pesterfield on a Saturday morning, and he called the medical staff there, but then went the extra mile and called the mother of the inmate, I don't know if that's the right term, inmate, and talked to the mother for, I think, 20, 15, 20 minutes, and made her feel better about what, you know, how we were handling the medical situation with her son. And I just have to say, it felt like, when you told me that, it felt like a small town, like that's, that's super customer service, and, you know, for somebody who, you know, we may not think of having that great customer service for, but that's what you do. So I just wanted to commend you for being so responsive on that and going the extra mile, so. Absolutely. Thanks for all your hard work. Okay. So 13 was covered, and now we're on to, unless there's other questions, we're going to go on to Bill 1325. This is from Councilman Young, zoning regulations, my favorite subject, tattoo and body piercing establishments.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Young?
Appreciate it. So Bill 1325 amends the Baltimore County zoning regulation to permit a tattoo and body piercing establishment by right in the business roadside BR zone, but specifically restricts it to an area that is north of North Rolling Road and also in a commercial revitalization district on the Baltimore National Pike. This is similar to legislation that was done before I got here, but working with the property owner and the business owner, they came to my office asking for assistance. This is something that the council had done previously, I think in the Towson area, which is why you are aware of it, Mr. Chairman. So working with them and the other restrictions that are all already in place, even though by putting it into a commercial revitalization zone, those restrictions aren't in place. They already are, which we identified before putting in the request for the bill. So the, the general restrictions that are already in place are still there, even though they would be waived, and just trying to help out a property owner and a business that's trying to come into District 1.
Did it have time restrictions?
Time restrictions as well? You know, I know, and I know in Towson, we had, they had to be closed by 9:00 PM. I, I don't know that you necessarily want to do that.
If that's currently in there, then that stays the same. This is just about adding it. So if it's currently 9:00 PM across the board, then it would still apply.
We had it, when we did the legislation in Towson, we had concerns that, you know, people might go to, I mean, they could do it during the day and do this, but they're drinking at night and then go get a tattoo at 11:30.
Oh, I see. Gotcha.
Drunk, or.
Yeah, hadn't had.
We were, we were kind of trying to avoid that, like.
Sure, right.
We want you to get a tattoo when you're completely sober and.
Right. Hadn't, hadn't had that conversation. There is an art component to the space.
Right.
But we hadn't discussed that, one, because it's also on Route 40 and not near in a particular social area, but, but no, that hadn't come into the conversation.
Okay. Great. Any questions for Councilman Young on the bill? Okay. Thank you, Councilman Young. Next up is Bill 1425. This is from Councilman Catch. He's not here, so, Council, Secretary, did you want to talk about Bill 1425, uses permitted in manufacturing, ML zone automotive enthusiast club?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman and members of the council. So that Bill 14-25 would establish the term automotive enthusiast club in the zoning regulations and would permit such a club by right under certain circumstances in the ML zone. The term automotive enthusiast club would be defined as a facility offering automotive storage with access for members and their guests to a private restaurant and lounge area, including outdoor seating, presentations by industry experts, classes on issues such as auto safety and maintenance, administrative offices and related accessory uses. The bill permits such a club in the ML zone by right as an industrial use, provided the use is also located east of Interstate 83 and outside the Urteil.
That's super exciting and enthusiastic as well for cars.
A country club for cars.
Nice. Any questions on Bill 1425? We could put our Jeeps in.
Yeah.
Jeep enthusiast club. Okay. And have to show your tattoos. And you have to show your tattoos.
Membership.
All right. We'll move on. Bill 1525, this is use, this is from Councilman Jones, uses permitted in BMCT district, elderly housing facilities, and overcrowded school districts. They don't seem like they go together. Councilman Jones?
Yes. Yeah, this is basically a proposal where property is slated for a hotel or an apartment complex, and we're making a few changes. Basically, this property is on the other side of, basically, it's pretty close to the Oings Mills overlay district right now, which would be permitted on one side of the street and not permitted on the other side of the street. And basically, I don't think that an office building is coming anytime soon, so I'm willing to make that change to help them develop a property and get more housing for 55 and older.
Councilman Patoka?
Specific to a location or county-wide?
No, it's specific to a location. It has a criterion.
There's, there's.
It down.
There's actually language.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Councilman Crandall?
Councilman Jones, just, just out of curiosity, do you know if this proposed development will be subsidized? Will there be income restrictions on a certain amount of units? Do you know that yet?
I do not think so.
Okay. That's interesting, just because senior housing has been for, especially in, in our district, we have retirees that have a decent pension or retirement plan from Beth Steel or GM, whatever, and they would like to get out of their homes and into some local age-restricted housing, but they make too much money. They, their, their income is too, you know, is too large for, for them to qualify to get into some of the subsidized units that are in the 7th District. So I think it's good to hear that there's an option in your district that would not be so income-restricted, and some folks that are not wealthy, just happen to make too much money based on the, on the regulations, can get into an environment where they don't have to take care of a house and a lawn and a, and a yard anymore. So I just ask out of curiosity.
Yeah.
Thank you.
In full disclosure, I mean, it's early on now. I haven't heard anything from anybody to suggest that there would be any subsidized housing, but it is early. So right now, the answer is no.
Thank you, sir.
Sure.
And I'd add to it, not, not that this really has anything to do with the bill, but I would add to what Councilman Crandall said. Many people may know that we have been under a voluntary consent agreement for several years now. We're getting close to, to being able to satisfy those, that agreement, but senior housing was never part of that agreement. It was for family, workforce and family housing. And when I came into office in, in 2022, and since I've been a councilperson, one of the, one of the areas that I often see people struggling is over 65 individuals who are on fixed incomes, they have been in an apartment sometimes for 20 years, a new, a new company buys it, or new management comes in, or, and then suddenly the rents go up. Sometimes they rehab the units, they'll put a new kitchen in, but with that, your $1,200 rent goes to $1,900. And the county, I'm not saying we don't care about it, but the county has been so fixated on getting the number to the VCA, which we've had to do. We are going to, at some point, have to shift gears to a crisis that we have coming when we have 25% and growing, 25% of our population is over 65 in Baltimore County. We're one of the oldest counties in the country, actually. I think we rival, I think there's four counties in Florida that are, have a higher percentage of over 65 than Baltimore County. So this is an area we're going to have to turn our attention to in having some affordable units available to people that have probably worked hard their whole life, and then they're being priced out of, of the area that they've, you know, grown up in, worked in, raised their children in, and now they're often having to leave to go to other areas because they can't afford to live in the county anymore.
One in five is over 65.
One in five. Right. So it's, but it's, it's something that we're going to have to look at, so just to chime in. Okay. I think that is all we have. Mr. Secretary, is there something I missed?
No, that, that is correct, sir. Just as a housekeeping order, Bill 3-25 was withdrawn at the request of the administration prior to today's meeting. Bill 1125 was withdrawn also by the sponsor prior to today's meeting, as well as fiscal matter 3 was also withdrawn at the request of the administration.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Any other comments from the members before we wrap up? Seeing none, we're adjourned.